Welcome, everybody, to the Brunswick County Board of Education Regular Meeting, dated June 7, 2022. We begin with a moment of silence. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Benton to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Board members, next up, we have approval of the regular meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Berger, I would like to add, under Presentations, a special presentation by Dr. Oates.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Ms. Moffett proposes adding a second presentation by Dr. Oates to number two, and next.
I also would like to remove number 16, News ELA Renewal Contract. They're going to release some new documents at the end of June. We're just going to remove that until we can further investigate.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Moffett has made two changes, one addition to Presentations and removal of number 16, which is the News ELA Renewal Contract.
Motion to approve as amended. Second?
Motion by Mr. Benton, second by Mr. Robinson, to approve it as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And next up, we have public address. Mr. Green, if you could please read the rules for public address before we begin.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Policy 2310 says that if presentations are to be limited to three minutes per person or per organization, discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential may not be discussed in open forum setting. Chairman will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and rule the speaker out of order if necessary.
Thank you, sir. And first up, we have Mr. Lou Harmati.
Good evening. The 1960s saw the rise of radical ideologies and communism. They focused their attention on race, identity politics, and their environment. Their cultural revolution caused total takeover of American society and educational system. They infiltrated colleges, schools, churches, media, thereby transforming the consciousness of society. Today, all major institutions have been compromised by woke, critical race theory, and green ideology. Now they want to educate first graders in woke transgenderism and climate change. The COVID pandemic and Trump's loss ushered in the Great Reset and the New World Order. Their agenda is global government and total control of humanity, climate regulations, and carbon tax. The leaders are meeting today, this week, at the World Economic Forum to discuss their environment, social governance matrix, stakeholder capitalism, economic rebalancing or resetting the world economies and currencies, society and equity, global health, nature, food, climate change, industrial transformation, and the new tech revolution, innovation and artificial intelligence, world governance, cybersecurity. Now, the new world government is a foreliner to the Antichrist in Anton. He will control humanity like an iron fist. He is better known as a beast in Revelation, Chapter 13. He will place a mark on your head, on your hand, and to indicate that you can either buy, sell, or travel. He will make a peace treaty with Israel and break it after three and a half years. Then all hell will break loose on earth until Jesus Christ returns. Now, I want to mention a few things about wokeism. Wokeism basically is short word for cultural Marxism or total tyranny. Some of the pillars of wokeism are anti-white racism under the guise of social justice, rejecting total morality for homosexuality, environmentalism, and climate change. And they hate God, Christianity, and the Constitution because it slows their agenda down or stops their agenda. So my question to you is, do you want to give up your economic, political, religious freedom and your children's soulful lie that these people are permeating, talking about? And one of the reasons I've been talking at the board here about the Constitution is to let you know where your powers are and how you could resist this kind of changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmati. And next up, we have Joan Hall.
Good evening, Board members. Here are some questions I would like answered. How many students attend Brunswick County Public Schools? How many students passed to the next grade? How many failed? How many were expelled? How many cases of teacher misconduct did we have last year? I want to know how our schools are doing by the numbers and how we can improve them for next year. I want to thank you for improving the social emotional screening tool, but there is one question I would like changed. Question 20 says, "Something I want my teacher to know about me." It sounds like a question for grooming students. Why not say, "Is there anything you would like to say?" I am very impressed with your 2223 school book list. There are some great books on this list, but I am checking woke websites for any inappropriate books. I just want to make sure your list stays great. Please consider me a resource for these books and not your enemy. Here is an example of what I found. Has anyone heard of the Gender Cool Project? It is three books for five-year-olds. A kid's book about being inclusive, a kid's book about being non-binary, a kid's book for being transgender. The University of Massachusetts Amherst Poll says, "Given that CRT proponents claim this is only taught in college, they should have no problem banning a teaching of a racist, un-American doctrine that seeks to discredit the Constitution. But proof of CRT instruction in schools keeps popping up. How hypocritical that the people screaming democracy the loudest are the ones dismissing public opinion the most." I have a few seconds. I want to take a few seconds and ask you to please consider reviewing our school's safety protocols because of the shootings, and please increase what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have the Presentations. And first up, we have Dr. Kathy Spencer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Brunswick County Board of Education. I'd like to begin by thanking each of you individually and as a collective board for the service that you provide to Brunswick County as a community and the school system leadership and staff. Public education has always been recognized as the cornerstone for lifelong learning and community growth, something that in the fast-changing world we live in today has become even more necessary and valuable. Your work in this arena could well be noted in history books as a true turning point in public education. That includes unprecedented successes, challenges, and responses that are being experienced. But tonight, I am proud to bring you just one example of how Brunswick County Schools is adding its expertise and leadership responsibility to the success conversation and the value that's shared with others during this time. I come to you tonight representing the southeast region of school systems in North Carolina. This group was formerly known as the Regional Educational Support Centers that were funded across the state. As the Executive Director of our organization, known as the Southeast Education Alliance, I am proud to announce that Dr. Jerry Oates, your Superintendent of Brunswick County Schools, has been named the Regional Superintendent of the Year for the 2022-23 school year. Jerry knows he's not getting away that easily. I've got a few more words I want to share. This nomination was generated from the Southeast Education Alliance's Council of Superintendents and was unanimously approved by the group. Dr. Oates serves as not only the superintendent for your community, he is recognized across the region and the state for his strong and effective leadership work. Dr. Oates provides a strong voice on behalf of students and staff in Brunswick County, but he also speaks for the region at the state level. This includes his professional and collegial engagement with educators and stakeholders at all levels to ensure that the voice of many are heard while at the same time focusing on the opportunities to advocate for rural southeastern North Carolina in a way that serves all at the very best. He has been a strong community advocate in Brunswick County. He serves in a variety of leadership roles that provide him and the community with a more shared vision and mission for doing the very best for students, families, and communities. This work is recognized by his peers. This is even highlighted as he works with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction through one of their new models of identifying promising practices in our schools. Brunswick is one of the few in our region who has currently been recognized for this level of innovation. The state Organization of Superintendents also shares examples that Dr. Oates has shared to both new and veteran superintendents. And so, as a leader, he is committed to the work ahead while learning from the lessons of the past. Across the region, he acknowledges the reality of successes and challenges that are faced in southeastern North Carolina for public education. He works with his peers, who are often focused on similar issues, things like hurricanes, staffing issues. His leadership work across the region has enhanced the relationships among the Council of Superintendents as well as regional district support staff. You know, we've all dealt with many facets of trauma and challenge during the recent pandemic. COVID response is only one example of how strong leaders like Dr. Oates demonstrate an unwavering commitment to the education of students, the unwavering commitment to serving families and communities. I would be remiss if I walked away without sharing with all of you that Dr. Oates is not new to this type of role. He has served with his colleagues and focused on building strong relationships and a positive voice in many situations. This is especially noteworthy during our recent hurricane work, when our region was in a state of emergency and the districts, superintendents, boards of education, and state leaders had to come together to work with each other. That's leadership. This is why now, more than ever, leaders like Dr. Oates, who have demonstrated that type of commitment not only to Brunswick County, but to the entire region and the state, should be recognized for their work. The Southeast Education Alliance recognizes Dr. Oates for serving as an example of integrity, honesty, and passion to all those he touches. And while it seems to come natural to him, tonight, we share with you, as an organization, in celebrating Brunswick County's great fortune in having the North Carolina Southeast Region Superintendent of the Year leading your schools. Just for reference, the alliance includes superintendents from 15 counties in southeastern North Carolina. They include Beaufort, Brunswick, Carteret, Clinton City, Craven, Duplin, Jones, Lenore, New Hanover, Onslow, Pamlico, Pender, Sampson, Washington, and Wayne. They unanimously approved this nomination. So know that he will be representing the alliance with the regional recognition comes the opportunity to move forward to the state level. So he will be representing our region at the state level for the 2022 North Carolina State Superintendent of the Year, which is normally announced in November. Should he achieve at that level, he would go on to compete for the National Award of National Superintendent of the Year, which is offered by the American Association of School Administrators in early spring of 2023. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time and your busy agenda to share this wonderful news. I'm both honored and excited about the opportunity for spotlighting your superintendent, your school system leader, but more importantly, our Regional Superintendent of the Year for the Southeast Region. I'm humbled to serve with Dr. Oates and the other superintendents. I've served in their shoes before, and I wish him, this board, the staff of this school system, and the entire community the very best in the days ahead. Your work will always be important, but never more than when our society is in need of strong leadership. Thank you again for all you do and for allowing me to share with you tonight. And I'd like to leave you with this closing quote to think of. If your actions inspire others to drain more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader. That's from John Quincy Adams, and I think it speaks to Dr. Jerry Oates. Thank you so much.
And next up, we have Dr. Oates giving a presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Berger. Just let me say to Kathy and the representatives of the Alliance, thank you for the recognition. And as I've said numerous times with my staff and publicly, this is simply confirmation of hard work that the team has done. We don't work in silos. We work together almost on everything. And as I told them in Cabinet Monday or last week, I'd put this administrative team up against anybody in the state. They work hard, they have children at the forefront, and that's what it takes in these days in order to lead any school district. So I'm humbled and I'm honored, and I thank each of you for your support. So moving from that, the presentations that I have are for two people, and it ties in perfectly with what I just said. Any organization that is going to be successful can only be as successful as the constituent parts that make it up. And I've been blessed to have several of the greatest administrators work with me day in and day out. But as with everything, change comes. And there are two people I'd like to recognize, one being Sue Rutledge, who is retiring this year, our Chief Operations Officer, and Mr. Daniel Siemens, the man that's always behind the camera and the man that brings the positivity to this district, to this region. These two folks, if you could just watch us work in Cabinet, they keep something going all the time, and it's fun, it's light. Daniel's going to bring the positivity, and Sue's going to bring the jokes. So I would like the two of these folks to come forward as we have something for you.
Dr. Oates, who's going to take the picture of you giving Daniel this plaque?
Oh, okay.
So for Sue Rutledge, this plaque reaps Chief Operations Officer from 2015 to 2022. Sue Rutledge, in honor of your extraordinary leadership, service to Brunswick County Schools. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
And Chief Communications Officer from 2018 to 2022, Daniel Siemens, in honor of your voice of positivity and extraordinary leadership to Brunswick County Schools. Positive mind sees positive face.
Y'all.
I just want to quickly say thank you to Ms. Sue and Daniel for the service you provide not only to the district, but also for what you do for our board as well. I think many times, we lean on Dr. Oates, but we lean on the Cabinet a lot too, because sometimes when we call Dr. Oates, he says, "Well, let me call Sue," or "Let me call..." So we just appreciate all of you, and we hate to see you go, but we wish you well. And Dr. Oates, congratulations on your achievement as well.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up, approval of the minutes. Board members, in front of you, you have the May 3 regular meeting, and then you have the committee meeting, minutes for the three committees. Do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Motion by Mr. Benton, second by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have the consent agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to look at that already. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Robinson, second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And for the action agenda tonight, first up, we have Senate Bill 654. Dr. Oates, I'm just not going to throw it to you, because I think we've already beat the dead horse on this one. Do I have a motion to keep the mask optional, please? Motion for Mr. Robinson. Second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And next up, we have Ms. Cahill for Budget Amendments.
Yes, we've had a few budget revisions that have come through since the last committee meeting, and the first one is state number five. This is to appropriate some additional funding received from the state for drivers or for the Transportation Department due to the fuel increase. Capital number 11 is to appropriate $1,045 to GUB deals for the sale of some equipment. And Special Revenue Number 11 is to appropriate a donation to the MLK Scholarship Fund as well as a VOGED workforce study adjustment, and recommending approval of these if possible.
To move.
Take it.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. Motion by Mr. Benton, second by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's it for the action agenda. Discussion announcements. Dr. Oates, I believe you have an announcement or...
Just a few things I want to highlight, Chairman Berger. First, I wanted to thank all of our traditional high school principals for the invitation to our graduations this past week, albeit hot out there on the fields. It was a wonderful experience to see our young folks graduate and go to the next level in their lives. Excellent graduations. The processes were in order, and I just wanted to thank them for their hard work in putting those together and inviting all of us to be there. Secondly, tomorrow at 12 noon at Southport Community Building, we will have our retirement banquet for our employees who are retiring this year. As I informed you earlier, you are all invited to attend, and there's nothing you have to do if you want to just come and be a part of that celebration tomorrow in Southport. And congratulations to our South Brunswick High School baseball team on a wonderful season, although they did not win the state, they are still champions in our eyes. They had a wonderful run, and these guys put in some hard work, and they've made Brunswick County very, very proud. I just wanted to make sure that they knew that, that we were proud of them. Last on the discussion is simply just to make some clarifying remarks regarding some time bell schedules that took place. You know, yesterday, we sent out information for Town Creek Middle and Town Creek Elementary, having the bell schedules. There was consideration about changing the bell schedules. I just want to kind of just recap and clarify for those that may be a little unclear. Earlier this year, as we transitioned our fifth-grade elementary students to the Town Creek Middle School because of the enrollment situation at the elementary school, one of the deciding factors with this board in doing that was possibly moving the time for both schools to have to start at the same time. While that would have been very, very convenient for parents who shared, had children in both schools, we wanted to make sure that we were doing the best thing for not only our school community, but our Brunswick County community at large. We sent surveys asking parents for their input, for their preference of starting the school at the same time. We did receive that information and took that information into consideration, wanting to make sure that we made the best decision. But in making sure safety was of concern, particularly being on Highway 17 in the morning, the staff, we contracted with engineering consultants in order to do a traffic study, and the results of that study came back, and it showed that if we were to move the current school start times and make them closer together or put them at the same time, we would have an immense backup of traffic on Highway 17. 17 north could possibly back up to 87 by the Exxon store, and the left turn into Town Creek or Rice Creek Parkway would back up into the major lanes, that turning lane, particularly if you have a bus and several cars. And I'm sure Mr. Berger and Mr. Robinson can attest to the fact that the number of accidents you guys have seen of being involved with EMS, we wanted to make sure that that did not take place. So taking the advice and recommendation of the engineers for that, it was recommended that we stay with our current bell schedule for the safety of not only the children and parents that are entering into Town Creek Elementary and Middle, but for our community at large who use that major thoroughfare to travel from end of Brunswick County into New Hanover and into Myrtle Beach early in the morning. So with that, we just wanted to make sure that safety was, as always, our first priority.
Dr. Oates, I wanted to say that I personally appreciate that because, as Ms. Hall mentioned, we go into a new school year, safety becomes more concerning than convenience, and we wanted that convenience for the parents who had children at both schools, but if that's not possible and unsafe, thank you for looking into that and that decision. So thank you. So thank you.
Mr. Robinson, your...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Barger. I just wanted to make a couple quick announcements, comments. First of all, echo what Dr. Oats said, actually, good graduation ceremonies. I've heard a lot of good feedback, hot, but once again, very successful. Lots of feedback on the football field set up again this year. Lots of good comments, a little hot, but everybody had a good time, and I appreciate the staff's work. Also, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for another good school year. Challenges, but still a good year. I think everybody did a fantastic job, and I know for a fact, myself and Mr. Barger, dozens of parents have reached out to us. Ms. Hall made a comment earlier on the subject, you know, after the incident in Uvalde, Texas. A lot of folks have reached out to us about the safety concerns within the school system. You know, we have a good program in Brunswick County. We're not immune for incidents to happen, but we have a great resource officer program, and I want folks to know we are listening, and as time goes on, I think we will be talking more about safety concerns in our school system. Mr. Lemon mentioned that briefly as well, and we have talked about it off and on, but we are hearing the concerns of the parents and guardians, and there'll be an ongoing discussion of how we can improve and, you know, do things as good as we can in our school systems as well. And I appreciate those who have reached out, and our thoughts and prayers are definitely with the folks in Uvalde and, you know, hoping going forward we can see some improvement. Thank you, Mr. Barger.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Motion to go to closed session. Motion by Mr. Benton to go to closed session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lemon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Do you have a motion to approve personnel?
To move.
Motion by Mr. Benton, second by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion to adjourn the meeting by Mr. Benton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.